Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting.
I guess I should have turned the music off first. Okay. City Clerk?
City Council members, Agency Director Authority members Molly-
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs-
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris-
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I know what it was. I don't have my hearing aid, so I wasn't hearing the music. That's funny. Oh, well, somebody should have checked my birth certificate before I ran. So, who do we have doing the-
You need to do the roll call for the-
We just did the roll call. Oh, why do the housing? Okay.
Housing Authority members Harvey, Molly-
Present.
Mann-
Present.
Vice Chair Chris-
Present.
Chair Zetto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Good. So who's doing the invocation? Nathan Britt from Lancaster Rapids. Hi, Nathan. How are you?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for the opportunity that you've given to us to be here tonight. We pray that you would give us your wisdom. We pray for our leaders, that you would give them wisdom and discernment in all the decisions that are made tonight. Lord, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross and rose from the dead for our salvation. We thank you that through his gift of salvation, we can spend eternity with you in heaven. And, Lord, we pray that everything that is done here tonight would be glorifying to you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. So with the future Congressmen, you want to do the pledge?
Of course. Please place your right hand over your heart and recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have the Santa Centennial Celebration. Do you all want to come down?
Son International is-
I told you I don't have my hearing aids.
Son International is a professional women's business organization that does service, and we do service all over the world right now. We're the only NGO, non-governmental organization, that belongs to the United Nations, and we've given more than $4 million to all the causes around the world. Our big thing is to stomp out domestic violence and to stop human trafficking and also childhood- child marriages.
You know, we really got to work on the framing of these domestic violence. We probably shouldn't stomp it out.
But we walk a mile-
Just say.
Walk a mile in her shoes. Men walk a mile in her shoes to help us stop, get the awareness out.
Okay.
Right, Captain?
Done what?
He's walked them out.
Oh, good.
Red eye hand, red eye heels.
Okay, here you go. Here's the proclamation.
He's our club president.
That's $40 million. That's a lot of money. Start today. Come here. Let's get a picture. Let's just turn this off.
Okay. Make it easier for her. Make it easier for her.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do the Athena Award also, and I gave quite a few applications to your Deputy City Clerk, because everybody in this room knows an Athena. And we have one with her.
I keep nominating myself, and I never get it. You were in Athena, weren't you? Huh?
Ken was.
You want me to say something? Okay. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the Housing Authority.
Do we want to waive staff report reading?
Sure.
Yes, okay. Do I have a motion and a second to approve HA and B1?
Hold on a second. Do I have to leave?
No, no, no. This might actually be one you always want to hear. We're doing an update on some of the projects we have going on.
All right, let's hear the staff report.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight and present HNR1. As you all know, housing is one of the hottest topics in California government right now, but in true Lancaster fashion, we are actually doing something about it. So we have 78 units of duplex housing here in north downtown, and I'll turn it over to our Housing Manager, Chris Ahnny, to discuss further.
Good evening. There we go. All right, so this project is located at the southwest corner of Avenue I and Sierra Highway. The Architectural Design Commission and the Planning Commission have already reviewed and approved this project. There will be three different distinct floor plans, three to four bedrooms ranging about 1,500 to 1,700 square feet. Each, even though it's an attached product, it will have a front courtyard, a side yard, and then the next slide will show we incorporated, actually, two of the separate buildings will face each other, and what you'll have as showing here is we have a really nice landscape passeo. Currently, home builders are only building large, single-family homes, and the product you see before you will add additional, smaller living choices while adding additional population to support local businesses within a walking distance. Authorities are currently working on innovative subdivisions that we hope other builders will want to emulate. By design, we're creating, it'll be safer and also less likely prone for future blight. The developments were walking neighborliness and sent a positive message to the community and visitors. And next, Shannon will talk about one of the most exciting components of this project.
One of the key things we continue to hear from employers throughout the Antelope Valley is a need for higher-density housing. So this is an attempt to help respond to that need. This will be both affordable and up-there workforce housing, and of course, because it's Lancaster, we will have a renewable energy element to it. Once again, Lancaster is on the cutting edge. To our knowledge, this is the first development of its kind in the state of California. This will be a microgrid. This is part of our advanced energy community that we, for which we won a $5 million grant from the PUC. And so, being a microgrid, it will be self-contained within the network of homes. There will be energy efficiency engaged so that we have minimal needs for energy. We will have batteries there on site and also solar panels there on site. So it will be connected to the larger Edison grid, but if we continue to experience outages, these homes would continue to have power. So with that, we'd invite you to ask any questions.
So what spins the flywheel?
What spins the flywheel? You know?
The flywheel technology that is instituted actually starts with the use of electricity, spins the flywheel, creates the kinetic energy, and basically stores that kinetic energy in that flywheel. When the energy is necessary to disperse, that flywheel is still spinning, and then it pushes the energy back out through the energy that's been generated. So it's like a battery, but through kinetic energy.
We don't have a hamster do-
No. Each house will have a treadmill. No, I'm joking.
When is all this going to be done?
This will, what we're asking for approval for tonight will lay the electric infrastructure in place, so that's one of the first steps to getting the site ready for development. We anticipate, we're about to launch an RFQ for a development partner and hope to be able to break ground on the actual houses by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And again, to make key there is too, this is a public-private partnership we're working at. The city owns the land, or the Housing Authority owns the land. We've done this process through building permit, design phase. The next spot is going to be identifying a development partner to come in with the financing, building and constructing it, and then selling the homes eventually, so that we have a new community that's, basically, it'll be subsidized by the city. At the end of the day, we'll have a brand-new community downtown.
The flywheel. I'm just intrigued by it as a whole. Are we going to be taking anything off the grid with this?
The way it's designed is the, in a microgrid setting, it is connected to the grid, so there will be a meter. So if you can picture a condo meter, the city will have one connection point to Edison. All the energy used behind that meter will be billed by the city. So the goal is actually use zero energy from Edison, but it's there for resiliency purposes. So the flywheel and the battery will operate those facilities, create enough energy on site, and store enough energy on site that they won't need to draw from the utility, but it is there for resiliency purposes in case the sun doesn't shine for weeks or, you know, the likelihood, it's just safety perspective. We're also working on some other projects that will not be connected to the grid, that we're hoping to disconnect from the grid, that won't need the resiliency. So we're constantly thinking of these ideas to try to be creative.
So if Edison will, can we sell power to the grid from the flywheel?
Correct. It'll work as a net meter. So, yeah, if we produce more energy in that facility, it'll actually spin the meter backwards, so the energy will be going back into the system. So it's basically a net meter.
So if we have a flywheel, why do we need batteries?
Well, the flywheel operates as a battery. There's two different technologies. One is the flywheel is a little, is as efficient or less efficient than the battery. And then we're looking at some other that are sizing, so that there's spacing. You could put in some of the houses, you only need the batteries. In other places where we have park settings, things like that, we can place them in the parks, and the flywheels are much bigger.
How big?
I don't know the scale, but they're all underground, but it's, you know, I want to, trying to figure out something, probably as big as a desk right here, and it's all underground.
That's all.
Yeah.
I would have thought bigger. All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
The citizens will still have a line charge for medicine, though, correct?
No, their full electric bill will be from the city. That's part of the affordability component of it, is we will have the bill for medicine at the master meter, call it a master meter. Everybody else will be billed by the city, and hopefully, because it's integrated in the cost of construction, the solar is and the battery is, that those, they will have very little electric bill, if any, electric bill, if we're generating on site. And that's the goal with the affordability component of it.
Who gets the line charge?
We do, at the master meter.
Are we going to disperse that?
We would bill that back, correct. But if you're not using much, it's not going to be much.
Yeah, yeah, because isn't the line, the line charge is proportionate to the amount of electricity you use?
Correct.
So it's not like a flat fee. It's based on usage.
Yeah, it's directly proportionate to the demand that's used on the site.
Right.
Any other city doing this?
No, we are actually the, we talked about the $5 million grant. We were the only city, well, we were not the only city to receive the grant. We received a grant where the, to do this microgrid. There are some other projects that are micrograded. This will be the first affordable housing project that is micrograded and for resale.
Thank you. Good job. You must have worked your fingers to the bone on this, Kitty.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, let's vote. And it passes unanimously.
Unanimously.
So does she have to close the Housing Authority?
No, she just has to turn the meeting back over.
She just turns the meeting back over to you.
Okay, great. Thanks. So, do you want to stick around or do you want to take off? Up to you. Okay, good. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. I need to recuse myself on CC5 and CC1. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Are there any speaker cards?
Yeah, there's two, so we need to pull SACC1 is what you need to recuse yourself on. So it's, which is different. You and Ken both need to do that.
And CC5, correct?
And your CC5. And we have-
C1, right?
Card on three and seven.
All right. Take care of it. Tell me when to come back.
Okay.
So I need to also recuse myself from SACC1.
Okay, let's do that, then we'll, then we can get you two back.
Okay, due to the proximity of my employer.
And so, if I understand, based on where I live, that's, is that CC1 and CC5?
Well-
Based on where I live.
Tell Angela to come back.
Yes. Allison, why don't you, why don't you clear up?
We just need to do-
We need to do CC5 first, correct.
Okay. That's me, then. I'm gone.
No.
No, you stay.
You stay.
You're good.
No, wait, no, he's gone on CC5.
Yeah.
He's also gone on CC5. Yes.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve CC5.
I'll make the motion.
Second that.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
With-
Okay, now we'll do SACC1, where Angela will recuse herself, Ken will stay recused, and the mayor will come back.
Correct.
Ken, you'll stay.
No.
Ken, Ken, you're still recused. Mayor Paris comes back. There we go.
Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you. We're doing SACC1.
Okay. And I'm good with that, right?
You're fine.
Okay.
I'll move that we approve SACC1.
I second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous with two abstentions.
Yes, now they can come back. Now you should hear these two speaker cards, and then we'll do the rest of the consent.
Michael Reeves. Does this mean you've decided to run? Just a question.
Mayor Paris, Council, ladies and gentlemen. Next year, we have many elections. We have a primary election in March. We have a city election April 14th. We may have a congressional special election for the 25th Congressional District. We may have an election for the Antelope Valley Union High School District Board. We may have a runoff election for the city election. And finally, we'll have a November election where we'll vote for president and all the other offices. That's, you know, as a person who loves elections, that's just too many elections for me. I would hope that the council would consider having the city election in November of next year. We've talked about this before, and one time we voted, Mayor Paris, and you voted for the proposal. That was many years ago, and I appreciate it, because I think it would give more people the opportunity to vote and participate in this election of the council. I fear that it, people are going to be worn out with these elections. We're going to have fewer voters, and as a result, when the people get elected, the people may be dismayed by some of the people that got elected, but it will be their own fault because they didn't vote. Allison probably has it set up for the 14th, and I don't know if they have arranged for the registrar voters to have boxes where you can drop off your ballots at certain locations. But I really sincerely would like to see the city election in November for everyone to participate, and we'll have maybe a broader field of candidates, and people can select from all of those people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't think I get to say I'll extend my election, my term till November. There's probably some laws about that. As to the election, I was thinking of having the Ukraine do it over the Internet.
I would remind everybody that we are doing an all-male ballot for this election, and it doesn't get any better participation than bringing those ballots to your home, Michael, so it's the best way to do it, and that's what we're going. And we did change it from an April election to the primary in 2022.
That's correct.
So with that, I'll-
Well, that's, they kind of changed it for us, didn't they?
In many ways, yes.
I do have one concern. Are the ballots going to, I mean, what we mail in, is that going to be stamped, you know?
My understanding is that we will be absorbing that cost.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I think we should do this one, because we're introducing ordinances. So I'll move that we adopt ordinance 1068 and adopt ordinance 1069 approving CC7.
Second that. Let's vote. And it passes unanimously. Fran? Come on down. I thought they already voted on five.
Thank you.
Three, okay. Oh, okay, good.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fran Sarah Sarris, and I'm confused. What am I supposed to be speaking on? What item, if I may ask?
Wait a minute.
Because I had-
You're confused about what you're supposed to-
You jumped around, and I kind of lost you.
Fran, you said CC3 was what you wanted to talk about.
Oh, okay, CC3, okay, sorry. That's the one on, okay, the SB2, component SB2, the fees collected for this, okay, let me go back here. SB2, planning grants program funds that are going to be, that are being collected and are going to be distributed amongst the cities in our community. Is that the necessity for housing approval and accelerated housing production? Does this mean that we're going to be building, well, we don't know how much money we're going to get as yet, right? Secondly, we will be building more housing besides the duplex program that you have going now, and will we be able to use some of that funding for the homeless?
Good evening, Mayor, Fran. This application is basically a grant for us to apply for, to get funds for the future housing element update. So every eight years, you have to update the housing element of our general plan. So in anticipation of have to updating that in the next couple of years, there is a grant that staff found that gives us the ability to apply for it and hopefully get it so that it could help fund that update. On this particular one, for some reason, we need council approval even to apply for it. So this is more about money for, to hire a consultant to update the housing element.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I answered my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran. Is there a motion?
I'll move we approve CC1, CC2, CC3, CC4, and CC6.
Do a second.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, continued public hearing. Let's open the public hearing. Let's close the public hearing, and we will deal with it later, right?
We did have one speaker card, if you-
He actually pulled it.
He pulled it. Okay, I take that back, then we will take this up at a later time.
Thank you. New Business One.
We have two speaker cards.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and Council. Before you this evening, for your consideration, is an agreement with Selbert Perkins Design for City Brand Development and Implementation. Our current brand, as you well know, was created over a decade ago and no longer matches our city's new vision for the future. And while there have been updates, while there have been efforts to update our look and feel, there's not been a comprehensive and systematic approach to focus our image and marketing efforts in well over 10 years. Rebranding is an opportunity to share our consistent message and tell Lancaster's story in such a way that it relates to the community at large. The accolades, which have been many, that we have achieved throughout the recent history, have been celebrated globally, and our brand should reflect this forward-thinking mentality in reality, and it currently does not. The City of Lancaster is on the cusp of transformation. I'm not telling you anything that you don't know. Under our new guiding initiative, STIR, which focuses on strategic technology, innovation, and resilience, as well as the IMPACT Program, our recently-approved $50 million road bond, our $15 million modernization bond, and the forthcoming interchange projects, as well as things that Shannon talked about tonight, like our microgrid developments, the physical characteristics of this city are poised for change, and a dramatic change of that. Now, you may say that a brand does not define a city, and I agree with you, but it can create a sense of place, and it can create civic pride when it represents the coalescing of so many special initiatives that we have coming before us right now. Our partner, Selbert Perkins Design, is in a position to provide the creativity and the efficiency needed to meet all of the project's goals, including their ability to provide a consistent message across all of our platforms, cultivating community pride, honor for our local history, and inspiration for the city's future. They are a full-service branding and design firm with extensive experience, more than three decades' worth, and involving notable brands and iconic landmarks. Locally, the Kaiser Building is one of their products. They've also worked with Santa Monica, Long Beach, Anaheim, Los Angeles, Marina Del Rey. The list is extensive. They understand that a city's identity enriches civic pride and stimulates conversation and economic development. And ultimately, we believe this new city brand will set the direction for using one look, one voice, and engaging common themes and images and words when representing our city in the whole. Mr. Selbert is here. If you'd like to ask him any questions about his background or what his team would be comprised of, he's happy to say a few words. But I personally am really excited about this. I think that if we're going to do this, the time is now. This city is going to look very different in three or four years, and I think a brand can get us there. It will help create that message. So, any questions? I'm here to answer.
Has everybody been briefed?
I do, no, sir. You have been briefed. We did talk at a very high level that we were interested in doing this, but you were the only one thus far.
This is really exciting. I mean, it's, it's not going to be just, you know, changing the logo. It's going to be much more significant than that. We're probably going to change street names. We're probably going to theme the whole city around those street names. It's going to be a huge change, right? And the more community input we get into it, I think the better, but it's, it's, there's, it's going to be a different city because we're going to change the brand so demonstrably that it's going to change how we, it'll change the culture of the city. I think it'll improve it. I'm kind of excited about it.
And it will be a community effort. We are currently putting together lists and lists of stakeholders, community members, our commissioners, businesses, partners, to all have input into this.
Good. Thank you. Fran?
My question was answered. Thank you.
David. David Paul. No, David, we're not naming Lancaster Boulevard David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm feeling really good tonight, and I love this effort to rebrand our city. I heard things like civic pride, tell our story, reflect what's going on. I heard one voice. You know, I think the greatest thing about this city is the ability to participate, to enjoy civic participation. That's what I spend my life trying to model for people, what a joy it is to do. And in all of that, I love it. The thing, Mayor, I would like to see, if we have one voice, everybody has to have the same reflection back. I want people to be able to see themselves from this podium as they deliver public testimony on any of these items. We have to restore that. That's just something that's so near and dear to me that if we are going to restrict some people from being seen, that's not a good reflection on the city. So please, let's get civic pride. Let's get people up here. Let's let them improve and evolve as people and learn how to communicate and affect what goes on in their city. I would really like to see that. Thank you.
How did you work that into the branding? That was pretty clever, David. Now, you know, one of the things that we talked about was, when you're driving- Now, you know, one of the things that we talked about was when you drive into Lancaster, it just really isn't very exciting to, the first thing you see is Avenue M. You know, that if we started naming the, the streets and put a theme around it, we could, we could, I don't know, I just, I'm just excited about it all. I'm sure there'll be all kinds of resistance, that people are in love with Avenue M or Avenue N, and, but sorry, we're going to change it. You're going to love it when it's done. Okay. Do we have to do anything?
I need to vote.
Yes, this is before you for action, per the recommendation stated on the agenda.
Move to approve NB1?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Passes unanimously. So Marvin, what do you think we should name Avenue M?
We just renamed it.
He told me Marvin Way. Oh.
We didn't rename Avenue M, did we?
Yes, we did.
Not at the freeway. N, yeah, that was N.
Isn't that what you were saying?
No. I was saying M.
You're allowed to turn and speak clearer.
All right.
I told you what Marvin, Marvin told me.
I'm biting my tongue. Let's move on. Okay, that was it. Any council reports?
Yes, the ABTA, we got official notice today that we received an additional $8,683,480 grant, which will give us an additional eight 40-foot buses and 12 30-foot buses, and it'll complete our charging system that we have for it. So just remind everybody that we've replaced the entire bus system in less than two and a half years. We've replaced 80 buses, which is a great thing. Macy, you've done a great job over there. Staff has done a great job getting, you know, over $80 million in grants. That's a lot of money for chargers and buses and everything that we've put back into the community, so.
Let's not forget who got the check. Kevin McCarthy, our congressman, right?
I was letting you do that.
Thank you, Kevin. That's a lot of money. I appreciate it.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
So I wanted to share with, last week, we won another Business Friendly City Award. So we are the only L.A. County three-time winner. So that's pretty amazing. I wanted to share with everybody in our city. I wanted to say, start with you, and our council and then staff have done an amazing job. And 88 cities, and we won third time. You know, this is something to be proud to be. So I just wanted to congratulate you guys. Thank you for your hard work. And Mayor Paris, thank you for your leadership, and Marvin Kest, and Ken Man, and Angela, you guys. I'm proud to be part of the team, so.
We have a staff that is next to none. I want you guys to know that. I mean, Raj was telling me about how, you know, there's five finalists, right? And they're all doing videos, and they were talking about Starbucks. Yeah? We were talking about things that were significantly different, and that's really because you guys don't work nine to five, that you live it, you breathe it, you wake up in the morning, and you're, you're making things happen. And I want you to know that we love you. It is truly remarkable what you do. Just say nothing, and you make us look good. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I thought you were telling me that we are now going to be the lowest tax city in the Antelope Valley. Is that true?
Possibly. Well, they haven't decided yet, but they are going to do a, they're going to investigate raising the sales tax in Palmdale, so.
So that means if businesses move to Lancaster, it will be cheaper to shop there.
To shop in Palmdale or Lancaster?
Lancaster.
It's, it would definitely, it's always better to shop in Lancaster now, but it's, we're, it's not going to be good for the city of Palmdale as it is, at least for their car dealers. It's going to be exceptionally good for our car dealers, where a percent can make a difference in the buying ability of an individual in their cars, so.
Why, Angela, that would mean if you bought a car in Lancaster instead of Palmdale, you would save about $1,500, right? One percent? That's pretty cool, I think. Good. So shall we get billboards, shop in Lancaster, it's cheaper? Or shop in Palmdale, it costs more? I couldn't resist. I couldn't resist. All right.
Mayor Paris, I, as we make light, I also think that we ought to go on record that the fiduciary duty that a council operates with, because obviously there's a need for why a city to the south has to consider raising taxes, as opposed to what Raj just shared and the innovation that continues to take place here in Lancaster. Not that we ought to take, take a lap, but I think we ought to take a lap. Jason, I know that, I asked the question, I know we won three times. Was there any other city that was able to win twice?
I believe one of the cities in Longwood was, was, was it won twice, but nobody won three times.
Right. And again, phenomenal feat, because again, I think, as you already spoke, people need to be aware, I, I know that often at times at council meetings, people come and talk, and they sometimes can't see the big picture, and so they have negative comments. But obviously, we traversed rough times. You took over, and the economy really took a dip.
It tanked.
Through the United States.
Didn't zip. It tanked.
And we, and we, and we maneuvered out of that. And I, and I, we're, knock on wood, we're one of the cities with your, under your leadership and council working collectively together. We're not in that harm's way. And I, I think that we ought to stop and take, and again, we win another award. And again, we, we, we get another grant, and you hear another grant, and another grant. And I think it's the aggressive nature, and sometimes we take things for granted, but, you know, here's a time for us to say, we did a good job, and we're continuing to do a good job from, from managing money. And I think that's important. So we just can't discount that. And I.
You know, political correctness makes us not want to reveal what really happened over there. What, what really happened is when you have people sitting at a council that think it's okay to take bribes, and bribes were paid, it's all over the paper, the, the legal proceedings are going on now, and you approve $35 million on a power plant that everybody's telling you will never be built, you end up bearing that burden that taxpayers do, that people who live in Palmdale do. It's, and it's not just the, the lost opportunity costs of all the things that could have been done with that money. It's now it costs more to shop there. That means businesses will go under. That's just the way it works. When you can move across the street and it's cheaper, businesses will go under. And you, you, you know, it always astonishes me how this process of getting elected to the council takes place, that people, 8% of the people vote. I mean, for heaven's sakes, this can change how you live. And the people who run, they, they run without any ability to manage these types of decisions at all, just because it would be fun to sit up here. Well, watch what being fun to sit up here means to the people who live in the cities. I mean, it's, it's despicable what occurred. We all saw it happening. We all were sounding the alarm, it's happening, that this is taking place, and it happened anyway. But it really is going to be tragic. If they have to raise their sales tax to pay for the power plant that's never going to be built because of the money, the person sitting there and the council that was sitting there, the decisions they made were just, you know, and I hope that never happens to us. And it's also why I think it's incredibly important that we stay transparent in what we do, and that when we have any suspicion or concern at all, that we voice it. The, and failing to do that, the consequences are just too great. And, you know, and what always really astonishes me is how little accountability there is for it. The people who made those decisions are going on to higher office. There, there is no accountability whatsoever. And who will take the rap is the current council, who had nothing to do with it. None, you know?
Part of the current council.
Part of the current council. Some of the current council had something to do with it. I agree with that. In any event, that's my two cents for what it's worth. Anybody have anything else?
I think it's, it's also, it's, when people at home or in the audience look at who to vote for council, we all have businesses that we have to generate new money for every week, every day. Some people that are elected to council get their checks in the mail. That's how they think money is made, it just comes in the mail. And those are the people that raise your taxes. Those are the people that have no concern for it. They also raised how much money it's going to cost to use their parks, to use the facilities. They're raising everything. So it's like, we just wasted $35 million of your money, so it's your responsibility as taxpayers to increase, we're going to increase the burden upon you so we can do it again. Just be aware of that. Just be aware of how your council is spending the money and what they're doing. It's, we're showing you, we're getting grants to do everything with, we're, we're paying for it, we're finding new ways to pay for things that we do do. We're not wasting your money. We're not in debt. We have very good financial plans. We have very good staff. Kudos to our staff.
And there's somebody trying to bamboozle us every day, isn't there? I mean, I don't think a day goes by somebody isn't trying to. Anyway, moving on. City clerk. Wait a minute, did I skip you, Jason? Do you have any announcements?
I have a couple.
Okay, sorry.
We have a couple of videos. Since we last met, the, we had two events, fantastic events, the Boulevard, as well as Field of Drafts, and we have a couple of videos for those folks who got some, some fun time on the Boulevard, got some free candy, and then some people went to the Field of Drafts and got some beer. So we'll show the videos now.
I always liked this event, you know? It's a family event. I like seeing all the kids. Makes being mayor worth it.
This is what Lancaster's about. It's about family. This look down here, these are the kids, these are our future, so yeah, we'll invest in it.
When we take a look at family and bringing everybody out, this Halloween event is one of our best.
Oh, my gosh, it's so nice. Unexpected to be like this impactful and just all of the.
So many kids, and they're all happy, and there's just a lot of activities for them.
Yeah, the kids are really enjoying it. They've managed to do a pumpkin, decorated some cookies. Yeah, they've really enjoyed it. It's nice to see lots of people dress up and they make a day at four, adults and kids as well, so it's very nice, yeah. Like it.
It's a good Halloween event for people that may not want to trick or treat on Halloween because, like for me, my husband gets home late, so it's hard for us to all do it together. So here, we get to have that time as a family.
The Boulevard's awesome. There's such plenty of stuff to do all the time. This is the highlight of our city.
And the Field of Drafts, not a child-focused event, but nonetheless, a great one.
First year coming, I'll come every year after this. Amazing time.
You guys didn't embarrass yourselves there, did you? It's great to have the community participating. It's great for what it does for the community. There's a lot of people that come here from out of town. There's a lot of people that stay overnight, so it puts into those local eateries, the gas stations, everything.
People talk about a community event. I know we get a thumbs up, and it introduces everybody to some of the local breweries or the wineries, and what a great way to introduce them.
People says that we don't have nothing to do out here, and I tell them like, listen, every year now, we have events on the Boulevard for Halloween, for the Christmas, go-kart racing. I'm so proud of it.
Bringing awareness to what we're doing here in the Antelope Valley, and it's just a great event to get people outside on a nice day like this.
It's a really fun event, glad we came, good music and good people, so cheers.
People think that since we're far from LA, that we don't have anything fun here, and obviously, that's not true.
Like the last summer hurrah, kind of, you know, it's always good weather, a good beer, hang out with friends, play, you know, and then go on about your day.
Thank you very much. Have a good time out here.
Did it sound to you like Raj was slurring his words?
I'm just kidding.
A couple other quick things. Tomorrow, we're having the Criminal Justice Commission meeting. We'll be launching the beginning conversations about the cameras on the streetlights, talking about the privacy policy and starting with the Criminal Justice Commission. So as we start rolling this out, the direction from council was to get as much public input as possible, make sure everybody's communicated with, understand what's coming. So we're kicking that off tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the Criminal Justice Commission meeting, and it'll be tracking through the process soon to be at the council to talk about that privacy policy, and hopefully, soon after that, a contract with a vendor, and we're moving forward and putting cameras on the streetlights. So that'll be moving forward as well. And then lastly, just recently, we, we took a drive around town. If you haven't driven around town in a long time, like drive it, look at all the projects. Our guys are doing an amazing job. If you go by Jane Reynolds Park and look at that skate park, it is fantastic. I mean, it is really cool, the, the pool that's in there, it's shocking that some kids are going to dive into that thing. It is, it is impressive, not only the way they're doing it, but the way our guys are handling it from an inspection perspective. You look at Jane Reynolds Park altogether, as part of that skate park, we're updating everything at the park, sidewalks, the community center, everything's getting redone. It's just looking fantastic. And the streets, and okay, and this has been a, a big issue with you and all the councils as well, is that you drive around the streets, we're doing, we are, there are streets being paved all over the place. So at our next council meeting, we're going to do an update for you on where those streets are getting paved, what streets are coming forward, because there's going to be a significant amount of streets being done over the next two years. So it's just, if you want to take a tour, I'll show you some of the things we're doing, but it's, it's really fun to see this happening. It's really cool. So just want to give that plug. Thank you, guys.
Good. And I would like everyone to watch the impeachment hearings tomorrow on Spectrum News, where your mayor will be the commentator. Now, they've asked me to be unbiased. That is going to be a trick. I'm excited about it, actually. Okay. Speaker cards. Oh, city clerk.
This is the time to address the City Council Agency Authority on Non-Agendized Matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless a different time limit is announced. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Elijah Flores. I figured I'd let you get it out of the way, you know? No sense sitting back there worried about it.
Thanks, because I'm really nervous. Good evening, everybody, mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I am here on assignment from Antelope Valley College, just to get some exposure in our local governance and everything like that. Not too big of a question. Everyone on the council could just go through, maybe if you have one thing in the past that you were excited to get done, or something in the future that you're looking forward to getting done, just hearing from you guys on that, and that's it.
Go.
Is no one excited?
I think the, at least for, and a lot of us sit on the ABTA or have sat on the ABTA, but changing the, from diesel buses to electric buses, we've changed our entire fleet, but we've changed the conversation in the world. And so now, we're showing the world that you can change your entire fleet and go 100% electric, because we not only do it locally, we do it as a commuter bus, but by doing that, we've created over 800 jobs at BYD, and BYD is selling those, and because of the conversation has changed. And BYD is selling those and because of the conversation has changed. And the conversation has changed to people can go further on electric buses. So it shows what the mayor accomplished as far as bringing BYD here, but it's what individual council people can do on individual boards and to do that with. So it's, it's, it's fun to watch and it's, it's important. And it's important when you see a council person, if they have those visions and they have the quality to make something like that happen.
That's awesome. Anyone else?
I'll go next. I think, um, I sit on, we all wear different hats. I sit on the Air Quality Management District Board with Marvin. And one of the things I, I think that when we talk about accomplishments, um, I, I lost count because we were in the hundreds of buses that we've provided for, whether it's school district, I mean, that's one of the exciting things that we've been able to do is, uh, give grants out to be able to replace the bus fleets. Um, and Marvin's reminded me, we're just approaching 200 buses. We're right around 180 buses now that we've, we've actually given out grants. And, and the Air Quality Management District typically, when we're giving out grants, whether it's replacing buses, uh, tractors to help local businesses, uh, trucks, uh, large trucks, um, you know, we're end up making the air better. Uh, in fact, our biggest problem as we sit on that board isn't how we're managing the air quality, it's trying to keep the air from coming over the hill and impacting the Antelope Valley. A lot of people are unaware of that. That's, is that not correct?
That is correct. The majority of the pollution comes from, uh, two places, through the San Joaquin Valley and through South Coast, which is the LA that migrates here. We don't do much pollution here, but our air quality is considered severe. And we're punished by the federal government for that and what they can and what we can do, um, in our community because of that. But it's migrating pollution, not what we're creating.
I didn't know that.
Why don't we put fans up like they didn't hatch?
Yeah, maybe we could blow it back, huh? Good idea.
It was a joke, folks. It was actually pretty funny.
I, I also sit on the, uh, AVTA board with Vice Mayor Crist, and I'm very proud of that as well. Uh, something for the future though, that I'd like to work with the city council on is finding a way to feed our children over the weekends. That's extremely important to me and, uh, being able to tie back an educational component with that, so. To be able to tie back an educational component with that, such as reading and learning how to read early in life as opposed to, we have kids that are graduating high school that could, could barely read. And that's a problem for all of us. So we need to get ahead of that.
That's great.
Okay, and then, um, I'm working on one of the project called Medical Main Street. Medical Main Street is all the, if you drive by AV Hospital, you see all the Wickenland. So we're trying to come up with the, the new infrastructure there. So we have a new hospital and then all the surrounding area, we will have, uh, retail, um, restaurants and hotels and, you know, and also, um, uh, you could say senior center.
Yeah.
So we want to have everything like the nearby. And, uh, that's a pretty exciting project that I'm working on and I, I think is coming up pretty soon, so.
Filling out the empty space, yeah. That's awesome.
If I have a regret, it's that I don't think we've done much of anything for single-parent families and giving them the, the tools and the resources and even the skills to be successful at raising those families. And it's probably because they have the, the quietest voice, you know? I mean, it's primarily mothers that are, that are working way too much and being terribly sleep deprived and not having the opportunity to, to raise their voice. And I think we could address that far better than we have. And, uh, next time around, I, that's really where the focus is going to be with me anyway. I think too often I get scattered in what I'm working on, too many, you know? And so that it, it's not moving as fast as it should, sort of like our community center that has not yet opened after years, years of me wanting to get it done. We, we get scattered in what we're doing and scattered in our focus. And in a, next time around, I'm going to try to really be more laser-focused, one project at a time. And I, I'm also going to ask the council to do the same. Pick, pick your focus. Now, with Marvin, we can't let him do that because he has so many things he's keeping alive for us that we don't want him to, to do that. But the rest of us, I think it's going to be much more project-oriented. We're, we're also looking at the idea of maybe assigning districts to each council member and that they meet with the people in those districts, you know, periodically, probably four times a year and, uh, generate more community involvement that way. But those are some ideas we're working on. Uh, the, you know, the problem with, when you sit up here is there's so many things to do. It's impossible to be satisfied with what, what you've done because there's so many things that didn't get done, you know? For what it's worth. But do I recommend you get involved? Absolutely. It's the most satisfying. I mean, I love my life and I didn't love it as much before I was mayor. I love it a lot more now that I am mayor because you have this feeling of accomplishment. You have an ability to, to effectuate change and you can help so many people. So you should do it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Before you leave, he's very modest because he tells what he's going to do and he hasn't done it, but there's projects out there that are the first, uh, of its kind with, uh, the mayor's help and Mr. Gomez's help. Uh, we've, uh, BYD hires 25% of all the workforce. Now, they have a living wage that they're living. It's not minimum wage, it's a living wage that they're working, but 25% of those are disadvantaged people. Those are people that are felonies, those are people that, uh, the homeless, they, they're giving jobs to all those, 25% of all those people. It's mandated by the unions, by the city, by everybody to make sure that 25% of our community is working, uh, there. So, uh, we do do what he said that he's going to do again in the next term, but, uh, we're going to do it better.
That's awesome. Cool. Thanks, guys. Thanks.
More than you thought you were going to get, huh?
Any more questions?
Thanks, Elijah. Fran.
Good evening again. Uh, Fran Serras here. I want to say thank you to our mayor, to our council members for all you do do because without you, we, we wouldn't have the city we live in. And I'm very proud of Lancaster. That's why I work what I do for Lancaster and our citizens. Jay Reynolds Park has had a tremendous change and, uh, because I serve there every Sunday. We, we feed the homeless. Uh, we do a good job and a clean job. Most of, now, 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 most of the time. Anyway, um, and, uh, we also have gotten a lot of good reviews from the people that do come to eat because our food is clean, it's good, it's well-maintained, and I'm very proud to serve there. So, uh, I wanted to give kudos to the Park and Recreation Department for what they have been doing with the park and the skateboards park that's going up. But mostly what they've been doing as far as keeping the area clean and keeping the, um, people that go there to create harm to others, to put it lightly, uh, they, it's very well-maintained. Uh, the Lancaster Senior Center, finally, we got, uh, opened our doors to the, to our senior citizens, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we opened up the, the new part of the senior center. And everybody's happy, we got so much room, we don't know what to do with it now. But I, that's all just now though, we have a lot of plans for it. I just, you know, it's coming to a point where, you know, um, this part of the year, this part of life, things are starting to change and, uh, and I, uh, I just want to say, I just thank God that he has given me the privilege of working with you guys because you, with, I shouldn't say that way, with you, uh, as far as with your helping me with my advocacy, and I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Wait a minute, I'd like to end with you, David. Have a seat. No, no, have a seat. Michael Reeves. See, I, you always bring such happiness to it, you know? That I like to end on a high note. Michael, you, not so much.
Okay. Mayor Perez, council, ladies and gentlemen. Raj mentioned, uh, Medical Main Street and a new AV Hospital. I can say that I go to and have been going to more finance committee meetings of AV Hospital than anybody in this community. I've run for the hospital board more than anybody in this community. And I guess I'm more involved in the, the hospital as a citizen than anybody in this community. And, uh, as you know, they're considering two bond measures to build a new hospital. One will be a private bond measure and one will be a general obligation bond measure like last time. Now, I really truly feel that we're back where we were in 2018. We're not prepared to build a new hospital. First of all, um, if the hospital people had an architect draw up a hospital, they didn't have community meetings to ask the public what kind of hospital they wanted. And now they've had community meetings informing the public of what they're going to do. And I've gone to many of the meetings. The bottom line is, the people in this town can't afford any more property taxes. And I'm not convinced that the CEO has gone to other sources like HUD, the county, and state and tried to get funding from them to build this new hospital. So therefore, and I've asked the leadership and the state government, I, give us a waiver, give us a few more years to think about this and work, work on it. It's not the CEO's fault because of all the turmoil over at AV Hospital that he's in this bind. But I would hope the council would join with me in asking the state to give us a couple more years to work on this. And, and then we'll come up with a concept and if we have to put a bond measure out, we will. But I hate us doing something like this under the gun and under pressure because there's a lot of other things that AV Hospital need to be taken care of before we build a new hospital. Thank you very much.
Michael, I want to thank you. I really want to thank you. I have been trying to understand the theory of relativity now for months. I've been reading books about it and all of a sudden it came to me. Three minutes really can be relative. David, come on down. It's pretty good, wasn't it? Mr. Mayor. I'm just practicing my routines. What can I say? You know what? It, it, there's a lot of joy in this room tonight and I'm loving it. I, I was eager to get up here and just ditto what Fran said because I know how much she loves this city and participating, and that's what I was talking about before. There is great joy in having some effect on what goes on and building each other up and upholding each other. And mayor, I'm sure you're familiar with this, um, and I will not say her name because I'll slaughter it, but a woman won a prize, the Nobel Peace Prize in Economics recently, and she does public policy ideas, how to bring better public policy for the common good. And I see that in everything this city does. I mean, it's exciting to live here. You were right, mayor. The staff is incredible. And I'm pretty picky-yun when it comes to particulars. And I watch the focused detail that these people put into their jobs and the heart and the soul, and it just, it, it just lifts me up to be part of all this. You know, what I wanted to do years ago when I first ran for mayor and which I intend to do if I'm lucky enough to be elected mayor, is to push for the finish of the strong mayor system and to have this city be in a position to pave a way even further by pushing back against the forces that hold us back. So I, I'm excited about what we have here. You know, you were talking, uh, councilwoman under with Jacobs about, um, putting together children to get nutrition with some, uh, educational component. I was very proud. I opened my son a bank account the other day and he was able to sign his name in cursive. Both of my sons can read and write in cursive and I don't know how you survive in this world without being able to do that. But that's one of the things that I think we need to look at and push and change. Mayor, you were talking about, um, being on the TV, commentating on the impeachment tomorrow. Is that going to conflict with criminal justice? Because I'd love to come to those meetings. What time of day is that? I think it, I gotta be there nine to two or something like that. Okay, well, uh, I'll have my wife record one of them that I don't get to, to witness. No, and, um, the final thing I wanted to tell you all, mayor, I was really excited about a year ago when there was a change in Palmdale and you were talking about our cities working together and stuff. We're all in this together, so we have to do that. And I did go there the other night. Vice Mayor Crist and Councilman Mann were, um, asking me about that. And yes, I, I went to watch them put that power plant to rest. And the opposition on the current council to it, realizing the futility and the stupidity of it, that's what I took away and I really love it. So I went there and represented for us and I was magnanimous in victory. We did it and I've never been prouder of my city than that opposition we put forward among all the other things that I'm really proud of. Thank you. Thank you. You know, Allison, we should use the authority of the city attorney's office. I mean, we ought to at least talk about it, of having some kind of public integrity unit up here that would have the authority to look at anything that affects the city where public integrity is an issue. Uh, we have this, uh, we have the power to subpoena people and perhaps we should at least look at the idea.
Okay.
All right? See what other people have done. What do you think?
I think it'd be a great idea. I think where we need to start is we need to start that, uh, a form that shows if anyone has received money from anybody outside other than just on your 640 form. But there's a form that other communities use that say that if you get money from, say, the people that are building the power plant, uh, where it went and what you did with it and how much that you got, if you're voting on those instrumental plans. It's just, it's something that the, the, the more knowledge the general community has, the better.
Seriously, Allison, I think we should really pay attention to the idea. And it would be, you know, I'll be dead by the time we actually see it come, the benefits of it, because those benefits are far into the future.
Sure.
But maybe we shouldn't kick the can down the road any longer. All right?
I'll get looking into it.
Okay. And, you know, you know the rule, be innovative, be creative.
Always.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. You have anything else? That's it?
I have one thing, it's a question that, uh, I'm reading on these notes that I got that we had an increase on our taxes, uh, 0.25% uh, from the county on Measure H.
I believe Measure H was a sales tax, it was 0.25%.
Correct. And the, our community has received 11,646,000 dollars to help the homeless.
Correct. That's what our research determined.
The Valley Oasis received 8,125,000 of that.
Correct.
Mental Health America received... Mental Health America received 1.5 million of that.
Correct.
And the City of Lancaster received $670,000 out of the 11 million to help the homeless. Is that correct?
Correct. That was, clarify, that was a grant we applied for that was competitive, that we just happened to get.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait a minute. How much money did American, what? Mental Health of America got how much?
$1.6 million.
And Valley Oasis got how much?
8.1.
That's just for Measure H.
Are they housing any homeless? Is there, is there a homeless facility out at Valley Oasis? What about Mental Health of America? Do they have a place homeless people live? You know what I want to start with on that public integrity group? You know where we need to start? What do the executive directors of these organizations make? Do we know? Can you find out? Report back?
We can do some digging.
You know, $10 million here, $10 million there, it starts to add up. All right? Maybe we can get somebody from Lhasa to come up and explain to us how that's an efficient use of the money that should be coming. This is outrageous.
We're getting 5% of the money, but we're held to a higher standard that we're supposed to be getting close to $12 million, and we're only getting $670,000 of it. And we have the blunt of the problem. So we need to look at it differently of where the money's going.
Are there really that many crazy people up here? That all the money gets spent on them? Oh, you're not going to answer that, are you?
We've not done that research.
Oh, my gosh. That is crazy. Thanks. Okay. We're done? Anybody else?
You have adjournment.
I know.
Mayor, before you adjourn, I, we're not, I don't believe we have scheduled another council meeting in November. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands, at least from me, and I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. We got a lot to be thankful for. So everybody have a great Thanksgiving. No, I'm sorry, Mayor.
So, Macy, I want you to know that we are sorry for your loss. And I also want you to know how much we appreciate, how much you've brought to this city. You have, you are largely responsible for the, the different programs that were at BYD, how you've dealt with AV Transportation Agency. You are one of the unsung heroes of this community. And I want you to know that it has not gone unnoticed. And we are saddened that you have to bear this. The city will adjourn in memory of Nicole Marine Nashita Carrer. Nashadi Carrera. I'm sorry. You could have told her to get it easier. Name, though. A creative artist, an inspirational spirit, a beloved mother, daughter, sister, aunt, and treasured friend to many. The council is adjourning in her memory tonight. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 10, 2019, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home. And we have the grandkids, so I really got to move, okay?